Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Bless our honest and able leaders. Enable them to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. And we pray also for all victims of violence and for their loved ones. Through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. What a beautiful prayer, Helen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Perfect start to our meeting. Thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is the public address item. And so I will turn it over at this time to our call moderator, Stephanie.
Mayor, we do have one person signed up for public address today, and that is Mr. James Skank. I am allowing you to talk right now, Mr. Skank, and I'm asking you to unmute. So I think it should prompt you to be able to talk to us. Are you with us, Mr. Skank?
No, I think I am. Can you hear me?
We can. Yes, sir. You may begin.
Okay. Good afternoon, Council Mayor. My concern is with, I'm calling today, five years ago, you know, we put that Prop 1 in. And today, we seem to be trying to finish up with some of the projects. And two on the consent agenda, 2I and 2J. Both of those are listed at, well, 2I's listed at over 5 million. I have records from back when the bonds were passed. And this particular part of the project was only listed at 3.4 million. And that's just from records I have from back when it was issued. And on 2J, that's with the Southwest Quadrant. The first one was with the Arden-Sonceh-Helium Road project that's going on out there. The next one is at 5.6 million of the Southwest Quadrant, finally getting over here. And it was listed at 3 point, well, a little over 3 million. And now it's at 5.6 million according to today's agenda items. My question is, I'd like to hear some discussion. I've looked back and I've listened to most council sessions and have never heard a discussion as to why these projects, which was a little over 6 million, went to over 10 million. And where, what are we taking from in these other projects? Or where, how is that working? So a little detail on that today, maybe during, well, when you get to the consent agenda, which y'all have already consented to this. And I would really like to hear why you consented to projects that were, you know, in excess of 4 million more than what we voted on. And then one other thing is the potential of having some public meetings now to where we can actually be back in the council chambers. You know, we're open at 100% in the city. And to not have council meetings in front of y'all where we can have discussions with you before and after. And doing, you know, is really limiting citizens to be able to talk with you. And, you know, sure, we can email, we can call, and we can do all those things. But that's not happening. So anyway, maybe there'll be some discussion on the consent agenda. That's my request today. I know I'm probably, I haven't counted my time, but I can keep talking. If y'all would like to hear some more.
Thank you, Mr. Skank. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, if we could just have you address those when we do the consent agenda. And then you can talk again about the meeting conversation, public meetings, and your plans for when the city council will be doing public meetings again during the coronavirus. We did discuss that in the last meeting. But maybe Mr. Skank didn't hear it in that meeting, so we're happy to do that. Coronavirus update.
I was out. I was out.
Stephanie, would you mind? I think, I think Mr. Skank's mic is still on. I can hear, I can hear you still, James.
He's turned off now, Mayor.
Okay, great, great.
I know.
No problem. We just, I didn't want him to accidentally say something, not realizing that his microphone was on. So, okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 1A to review the agenda for, and the attachments, for any questions that you had upfront, Council. Was there anything in your packet that you wanted to talk about before we come to an item on the agenda? Okay, let's move on then to Item 1B, the coronavirus update. Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mayor. We have a number of things to talk about today. We've got, of course, Casey Stotin's going to give us an update on coronavirus activities, vaccination activities. And of course, the announcement that was made earlier today from DSHS on eligibility. I figured before I hand it off to her and then to Laura Storrs to give information on the additional rescue funds, I think is what they're being called, from Congress. I will also, but first, I'll just touch on that last question from the public address citizen. The thought process on go back to in-person meetings is directly to when our public and our team could reasonably be vaccinated and have vaccines available to them. Based on the announcement that was made today that every adult 18 and over is eligible for Moderna, and every adult 16 and over is eligible for Pfizer. And then every adult inside the appropriate ages for the other vaccines will be eligible as well. So it is, I would expect it to be relatively soon when we could have allowed all of our citizens to have been vaccinated and those that wanted. Obviously, there's going to be people that don't. And, you know, however that works out for them, that's their responsibility and that's their choice. And I'm not complimenting that. I'm just saying, once we get to that point, there is no logical reason to not meet in person, at least in as much as the council would like to. We still, as long as we are in the governor's declared state of emergency, or disaster, rather, we have the authority to do virtual meetings. But there's no, you know, there's no compelling reason to, you know, there's no reason for health and safety reasons once we have addressed the vaccine availability issue for those that would come to meetings. So that is the thought process there and.
Jared, can I just add in a little bit that I've heard you give this answer a lot. And really, one of the main reasons I've heard you give is that our council chamber is small for the number of people that we pack into it. If you've never been to a city council meeting in person before, you have the people that sit up on the platform. And those chairs are, they're not six feet. And there's no way to spread them out because that platform is only so big. So it creates a problem for the council. But then there are another 30, sometimes 40 people that are city staff even related, in addition to the public, that sit in that room that has about 150 chairs in it. And so it's a small room. And those department heads can't safely distance six feet in the room, much less with the public. So that was really behind your decision in the beginning to not do meetings in public. We could move to a different room. We could move to the Civic Center. But we don't have camera equipment or microphone equipment that allows us to broadcast the meeting. And so you were put to an election, sort of have an in-person meeting in a larger space without the ability to broadcast it or go virtual so that anybody who wanted to watch it could watch it and yet still be safe. Doing the meetings in our existing city council meeting room just wasn't an option because it is such a small space. Did I summarize that correctly? And I just, I did that because I'm not sure everybody has heard your thinking on that.
Right, yeah. You did a great job capturing all the things in addition to just the health and safety items, the logistical challenges, the spacing challenges when we implement social distancing in the room. The capacity goes through the floor. And then if we go to a space big enough, there's technical issues that are going to make it a very difficult meeting to either see or hear, whether you're there or watching online. So I think we have a good way forward, especially in light of the announcement that Casey will be talking about here in just a few moments. I don't know exactly what the timing would be for that. You know, obviously, we would want to give people time to get that second vaccination and some other things. But we'll work with, on a very regular basis, with our Public Health Director and our Public Health Authority to help inform when we're ready to go back to in-person meetings. Now, if there's no other questions on that, and I want to, I definitely don't want to cut anybody off if there are any questions on that. If there's no other questions on that, I'm going to go ahead and hand to Casey Stotin, Director of Public Health, to give us the update on coronavirus and activities associated with it. And then we'll go to Laura Storrs to give us a presentation on additional funds that are being made available. So Casey.
Thank you, Jared. We'll talk about the numbers and then we'll talk about the vaccine because I think that that's a very important piece of information to talk about. So as of today, there are a total of 33,505 total cases of COVID-19 reported in Potter and Randall Counties. 17,109 cases in Potter County and 16,396 cases in Randall County. There are a total of 32,536 recoveries. And we are up to 704 deaths here in our community. That leaves us with 265 active cases. The seven-day rolling positivity rate is currently at 2%. And the positivity rate at the drive-through testing site is at 13%. Five-day new case average is at 17 new cases per day on average. Yesterday, our GA 34's hospitalization percentage was at 4.57%. And that means that 4.57% of all hospitalized patients have COVID-19. That puts us in that, in not in an area of high hospitalization. Need to be over the 15% threshold for seven consecutive days. We're also currently in status level yellow. It is important to remember to continue masking, social distancing, good hand washing, and vaccinations. Virus is still here in our community. We do have good news on the local hospitalization front. We have 23 patients with COVID-19 hospitalized. While our concern does lie with each of the hospitalized patients, we recognize that that is a huge blessing. At one time, we had over 300 hospitalized patients with COVID-19. So we've definitely come a long way as a community. We do recognize that it's significant for each of those 23 people that are in the hospital right now. Adult bed utilization is currently, ICU utilization at 72.5% and ventilator capacity at 23%. An additional piece of great news is that at the time of the report, Northwest Texas Hospital noted that there were no patients currently on the ventilator related to COVID-19. And BSA had a very, very small number of patients requiring mechanical ventilation. So again, just great stride there. We've truly come a long way. We've definitely worked hard together as a community. And we can keep going to keep our community and loved ones safe during, this has definitely been a hard time. The public health drive-through operations remain consistent. Our public health drive-through testing site remains operational. Individuals can still call 378-6300 to be screened and directed to the test site. The vaccination clinic at Civic Center does remain operational through Entrance 3 on the north side of the building. To date, Emerald Public Health has given 64,653 first doses and 38,537 second doses for a total of 103,190 doses given. So it was a red-letter day to reach that 100,000 mark. And we sure appreciate all of the, all of the effort and all of the teams, the police department, the fire department, the Civic Center team. Man, they are just outstanding. Parks and Rec, the library, all of the different teams that have pulled together to make this happen for our community. Could not be more proud of them. Today will be open until 7:00. So come see us, a healthcare worker over the age of 50. Not, not the same if you're a healthcare worker, comma, if you're over the age of 50, if you're over the age of 18 and you have a chronic healthcare condition, or if you're an educator or work in a licensed healthcare facility, if you work at a school, preschool, primary school, secondary school, any of those categories, that group has been called. So we certainly want to encourage any of those folks to come be vaccinated today. But again, the very best news that came out today was DSHS announced that beginning Monday, March 29th, the COVID vaccine will be open to all ages. So 16 and over, older for Pfizer, and 18 and older for the Moderna vaccine. And we have the Moderna vaccine at the clinic at the Civic Center. And so we will be able to see patients that are 18 and older at the Civic Center. I think one thing that's to note related to the conversation previous, related to in-person meetings. A person recognizes their full vaccination status two weeks after their second dose. And so the Pfizer vaccine, there's, those two doses are three weeks apart. The Moderna vaccine is four weeks apart. And then two weeks after that second dose, then that patient would recognize their full immunity. And so I think that that's definitely something to keep in mind, especially if we're going to be pulling in groups of people into a small space and we don't necessarily know their, their health status. So definitely just want to put that out there for consideration. And that's, that's all I have today.
All right. Is there any questions for Casey from council? If not, we'll go ahead and hand it off to Laura. Laura, you available? Are you ready?
Yes, sir. I am here. Let me make sure I can share my screen real quick. I have a very brief presentation that our finance team with Debbie Reed leading it, they have put this together for us to share this information and want to make sure council knows that this is coming, this is very recent. And we know there's going to be continued guidance issued related to this funding. And we will keep council up to date as that continues to evolve. Stephanie, do you mind allowing me access to share my screen, please? And it'll be my second sign on.
Okay. Hang on a sec. I didn't realize. Okay, you should have the access now.
Perfect. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, so again, a very brief presentation. We are really excited that recently there was legislation passed that became law on, on March 11th. So just, just a few weeks ago. It's very recent here. This is the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It will be referred to as the ARP. What we're going to be looking at is this federal stimulus bill that is HR 1319 and the impact that it has on cities and counties. So as I mentioned, this became law on, on March 11th. And it's $130.2 billion in relief to cities and counties nationwide. The amount for the city of Amarillo, and these were based on population, the amount coming to the city of Amarillo is set to be $42,270,000. The way this relief funding is set up, there is distribution that will be made in two installments. So 50% is anticipated to come by May 10th. So very quickly, very quick turnaround on this. And then the other 50% is no earlier than 12 months after the first distribution. So we would be looking at then, no earlier than May of 2022. So larger jurisdictions, which the city of Amarillo does qualify in that category as a large jurisdiction, are set to receive direct distribution from the U.S. Treasury. So this is a little bit different than the way our Corona relief funding, coronavirus relief funding worked, where we had to apply through the state. We are considered a large jurisdiction, so we will get distribution straight from the U.S. Treasury. So there's no application, no qualification process. Smaller jurisdictions, which would be several of those that are also in our regional area, they will be applying through the state. So it'll probably be a fairly similar process to what we went through as we were doing the coronavirus relief funding, the CRF funding. Now, all of these funds must be spent by December 31st of 2024. On this side, we're, let's talk for a second about the eligible areas of use. And this is the one that if this acts anything similar to the Corona relief funding, coronavirus relief funding, it did evolve over time. But these are the eligible areas that are being outlined at this point in time. So this is what we are doing our planning off of. So the first one is response to public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 response. And, I'm sorry, or its negative economic impacts. So that may include assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits. Or it can aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. It's also eligible to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID-19 by providing proper pay. There is a provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of eligible cities and counties relative to revenues in the most recent full fiscal year. And that, that area is very different than the CRF funding. There was no provisions in the CRF funding that allowed for any kind of a revenue loss or revenue reduction. So that is kind of a new area with this relief funding. Then the last area identified for an eligible use is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. And again, that is another new area to this relief funding that we did not see in the CRF funding that the city received before. And as a reminder, that was about $11 million that the city received last year. Well, it was, we were outlined to receive it last year and we got it in the bank account just after our fiscal year end. So this is a whole new set of relief funding. It comes with some new criteria. But we are very excited for this opportunity for our community and for our city. So at this point, I want to open it up to council if you have any specific questions on this or the previous relief funding that we have.
So Laura, in regards to your first, first bullet, is there additional details as far as households, small businesses, nonprofits, as to where those dollars, you know, how those dollars could actually be spent and be assistance in those particular areas?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, there's, there's some additional criteria in there that we are sorting through. And we're trying to find possible eligible uses that we can share with council as we move forward with this, if that is an option or an area that council decides to proceed.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yay. Not that it took more than one hoop to jump through, but thank you, Stephanie, for walking me through all that, getting me back online. Well, I just want to make note on, it's very interesting with these dollars that we do have the opportunity to make direct transfers to small businesses, to households, to tourism, travel, hospitality. That is very different from the other. We had major restrictions and could only reimburse the city for out-of-pocket expenses. And so one thing that I'd like us to look at is being sure that we cover direct expenses, for sure. And then beyond that, that we take advantage and look at opportunities to actually push these dollars through to our citizens and our local economy. One of the things that is different with this and the past COVID relief bills, most of those were going to, not to cities, not to states, and certainly not for recovery of revenue. And, you know, it may not happen today, but a tax increase is definitely being discussed in Washington. Odds are that our local citizens and businesses are, this isn't free money. It's being advanced, but it's going to come out of somebody's pocket at some point. And more than likely, our individual homes, households, businesses. And I would like us to prioritize the distribution as directly as we can back to the pockets of local citizens and businesses.
And Councilmember Hayes, our plan on this will be similar to what we did with the CRF funding. We also will be working with other cities, brainstorming some ideas on how best to put together programs or some ideas for programs for those very items that you are addressing. And as we kind of collaborate and come up with some ideas on those, we will certainly be presenting options for council if they would like to consider it. And so again, this is all very new information that's come out. And so it's just determining the best ways to navigate what those eligible uses are to ensure that we are handling the money properly. And then as the council decides they would like to utilize those funds.
Also, as we look back at, one of the industries that was hit the hardest was our hotel industry and our travel industry. And surprisingly, our sales tax have rebounded quickly. They were not as negative as we expected them to be. And so I would like that to really be on the burner of a possible investment into our, of funding some of the travel and tourism that we lost significantly through our hot taxes this last year. But I was not aware until your report today, Laura. I think this is a really encouraging, interesting aspect of these dollars, that we have some flexibility that we did not have in the past.
Laura, do you have any indication on a timeline for, you know, further details on information about what types of projects would qualify? I just know when we did, you know, when we had the previous package, it took a little while for us to figure out. I mean, we ended up doing small business grants and loans. But, you know, it took us four or five months to put that together and understand how those programs could be funded with those dollars. So is that the kind of timeline you would sort of have in mind for this?
Well, we certainly hope we can turn this around faster than we did the last time. Part of what occurred with the last relief funding, as again, we got it from the state. And so the state had some additional information that they were putting out there related to the use of the funds. And actually, the state was updating, they, they had a website, and it was, it was very useful. They had a website with frequently asked questions. And they were updating it almost on a weekly basis. So they were pushing out constant information as cities were coming up with these great ideas on how to utilize the funds. They were coming up with yes or no, or if you do it this way, it will work. If you don't, you need to kind of do it a little different. So giving some guidance now. Since this is coming from.
Oh, do you have a second to look at these other tiles? Are you for?
Somebody head there. Yeah. Make sure everybody's on mute. Thank you.
And since, since these dollars are coming straight from the Treasury Department, it may look and feel a little bit different. And we are anticipating there could be a somewhat broader scope to it for eligibility. And so again, we want to wrap our arms around this and make sure that we are proposing things or coming up with ideas that do meet that criteria. So Mayor, we again, don't know of a timeframe quite yet, but certainly hope it will be much quicker than the four to five months. The other great thing is, we were also, when we received the last funding, we were also neck deep in the pandemic, trying just to manage all the changes going on. We are in a much more stable place at this point in time and so can heavily. We are in a much more stable place at this point in time and so can heavily focus on how how fast we can get some ideas out there and back to council. So this was just letting you guys know, there is some, there's some big dollars that are headed our way. And there's some great uses that have already been outlined by the federal government. And so the next step will be starting to bring those back. And I will keep Jared in the loop and he can get some information out to council. So we can get timing and then hopefully in the next month to get some ideas over to council.
Thanks. It's important to note also that our neighboring jurisdictions also have received these funds, including City of Canyon. I can't remember exactly what the number is. It wasn't nearly the the type of numbers that that City of Amarillo has, but it's proportion. And then also twenty six million in Randall County, twenty two million in Potter County. So so there's, there's a good amount of resources coming to this state and this part of the country through this program. And and I think it'd be important for us to also at least be aware of what the other entities are doing as soon as we can be aware of that. So to make sure that the funds are not duplicating efforts, that they are complementary of each other. The projects aren't stepping on each other's toes, that kind of thing.
Laura, I had one other question on from the the state dollars. And where we're sitting, have we been fully reimbursed for all of our out of pocket costs related to COVID nineteen that we qualified for through the state? And if that funding ran out, if there were still, if we still had some negative in some categories where we have not been reimbursed?
So as far as receiving the funding from the state, we have received all of the funding from the CRF that that was a provision of the CARES Act and we did receive all of those dollars in. And we met all of the criteria for eligibility to receive the full eleven million dollars on that. So that has all been received. Some of those dollars are, they reimburse the city for costs. Some of those costs the city had already absorbed and so are now utilizing anything that was excess to continue funding the ongoing operations that are occurring with our public health facilities. So that is the testing facility and that is also the vaccination clinic. And those dollars are, it's been very essential to our community. And so the city has ensured that there is funding available to continue covering the cost. We do have grant dollars that have, that normally fund most of our public health operations. But public health has already expended all of their grant dollars associated with COVID nineteen. And so the city is using some of those excess funds that were available related to the CARES Act to continue funding those ongoing costs in public health.
Laura, is there a summary that is citizen who's curious about how those funds were spent? Do we have that posted somewhere? Because I I've had citizens reach out and ask, you know, did the city council use those funds to buy a warehouse downtown? And the answer is no, they didn't. But I think it would be great if citizens could easily access the, I've seen summaries. But if citizens could easily access those to see where the money was spent, just to help accurate information be out there in the community so that, you know, if they had a question and then just at the bottom, if you could say, you know, if you have more questions, you can always contact the mayor's hotline and that's three seven eight six four four five. But it might be great to have a staff member as a point of contact on that information. Do you think that's something, Jared, we could put on the city website? How can we direct a citizen to go look for that?
Absolutely, we can do that. I would anticipate that we would put that on the city website and just have a link that's easy to find. I don't know that it would be the right place to put it on Amarillo Alerts because that's more on the COVID, not so much on the
Health related, yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want to mix that up too much. I want that to be a very narrowly focused webpage. But we'll link that off of the city's webpage.
Okay, I think that'd be great. Thank you. Council, any other questions for Laura about that?
Just as you're gathering those, that data to be sure that we include the dollars that were granted to small businesses, not just our outlays on reimbursement to city costs.
Yeah, we have that, we'll have that broken out.
Absolutely. And again, there was grants to small businesses and there were dollars that went to cover the PPE. So, you know, masks, hand sanitizer, those type items that businesses expended to help navigate COVID. So yes, we will have, we can have all of that information out there.
Yeah. So again, you can, if you can't find it on the website or you would like somebody to just email it to you directly, you can call the mayor's office at three seven eight six four four five. Or you can always email, this, this email address is publiccommunications, it's plural, publiccommunications@amarillo.gov. And just ask them to email you that information. And you can ask any question to that hotline or to that email address and the city team will work on getting you the answer. Maybe not what are the lottery numbers for the next Texas Lottery. I don't, I don't know they'd have that answer, but anything related to city operations.
And Mayor, I just wanted to state that, you know, this allocation to cities that Amarillo, we are in a really good position to utilize these dollars for the benefit of our community. A lot of cities did not take proactive steps the way we took early on in the pandemic, making decisions, hard decisions of how to preserve our resources during uncertain times. And we navigated that financially very well and ended up in in a good position where a lot of cities now are using these dollars to dig out of some major deficits and not some really financially prudent decisions at the local level and state level. And so just again, commend the city manager for those decisions that were made very early on. And just a recognition that this is a great opportunity and for us to really think through all the best ways to utilize these dollars. We, we're in a lot better position than a lot of communities.
Fantastic point. And yes, gigantic kudos and thank you to our city manager and his staff. How they listened to what council said about conservative fiscal management during that time. We were able to get through it. We didn't have to raise taxes. And I think our economic numbers are showing so strong. We're ahead in sales tax from where we were compared to this time last year, which was right at or before coronavirus. So that's just really an amazing thing, a surprising thing. And what a pleasant surprise. We're used to this, all the surprises being challenging. And this is a nice surprise to see us economically rebounding so strongly. So thank you for bringing up that point, Elaine. I really appreciate that.
And Mayor, if I can add real quick, this act also will have some potential dollars coming to some other areas. We did get information, it wasn't through this act, but it was a separate relief funding. Our airport is set to receive an additional two point eight million dollars in funding. And then there's also some additional relief money that is be, that's going to come to the airport. We don't have that final number yet, so we'll bring that to council once we get it. I think maybe community development may see a little bit more transit possibly. As we get those numbers finalized and we know what we will be receiving, we're going to continue to bring that information to council. Because I think we need to really celebrate that those, especially when you look at our airport area, that was one of the areas that was impacted the strongest by COVID and that they're receiving some additional relief funding. That's going to help get them through so they can stabilize. So we're really excited about that one as well.
Anybody else have questions for Laura about COVID funds? Jared, anything else on coronavirus update?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. That's it.
Great.
No, that's it. Casey hit all the, all the important parts from the recent announcement from DSHS. So that's it.
Yeah, we, we definitely want to encourage anyone who is an adult to go and get a vaccine and that begin Monday of next week. So getting close, folks.
I got a text just a moment ago from one of our local business owners who's incentivizing his employees to come get vaccinated and was asking, when's the best time to come? You know, so if I say that now, everyone's going to come at that time. But we expect that that we're going to be very, very busy, you know, starting next week. However, that said, and for everybody watching, to encourage you to come when you, when you have an available moment. Lines move quickly. We can handle a lot of people. We've never fully stressed or fully found out how many people we can vaccinate. We anticipate we can vaccinate up to five thousand people in a day. The most we've done is thirty five hundred, thirty six hundred, something like that. And Casey, you can correct me if I'm grossly wrong. So, but not just a little bit wrong. Kidding. But we can handle a lot of people. So I would tell people, you know, we have, we have a good amount of vaccine right now. Now's the time to come. If you want to get one, go ahead and come on down. You won't have to wait too terribly long and it's going to be a very pleasant experience. You're really going to be impressed with what our team has done out there, with what Casey's team has done, with what all of our firefighters are doing, with what our police officers are doing there, with all of the nurses and everyone else that's out there. So I really want to encourage people to get on out there and don't wait, you know, go ahead and come on down.
Typically afternoon is not as long away as morning.
Yeah, it does taper off after about one thirty and it's the slowest towards the close, towards the end of the vaccination day.
So is there, is there going to be an increase in the allocation? Do we know that part of it? You know, I think our allocation was what about five thousand vaccines a week? Is the allocation number going up?
No, we expect to, for the allocation to stay the same, but we do, you know, that about a month ago, we were closed for a week due to the snowstorm. And so we do have, we do have enough vaccine. So I am excited to be busy. I'm very excited to have long lines again and to see people to be vaccinated. So please come stress our team. Come, listen to the, we have music playing, we have, so all the good things about the clinic. We're ready to.
Well, I'll tell you for my part, I'm excited to see what our team can do. Because the weather's bad, brutally cold outside for, you know, and we don't recommend that people come super early and wait outside even now. Because it's still, but our system's worked out now. We can move a lot of people through. And, and like I said, every single gotten a comment from has told such a positive experience. Everyone was so positive. The energy was so high. There's positive energy out there. And that's, that's coming from the team. It's also coming from the people that they're vaccinating who are excited to be able to, in a way, put this behind them. It's not all the way behind us. This is still something we're all dealing with. But there is a, an enormous peace of mind that comes with getting that vaccination is what we're being told, so.
So Casey, do you foresee adding either Pfizer or the Johnson and Johnson vaccine? Or is it, or, or is it right, right now we know it's Moderna solely. Do you expect on a state level to see that change any at all?
You know, I really don't know. I think it just kind of depends on what we are allocated and what the state sends us. So I, I really don't know. We're certainly, whatever, we're happy to give whatever they send us.
I just looked at that information on the DSHS website this morning and no private providers got Johnson and Johnson in the allocation this week. Only the DSHS office got any here in Potter Randall County. So I guess it just depends on what they have to allocate. Okay, any other questions about coronavirus? Great. Thank you, Casey and Laura, both of you for the work you're doing on those issues. Item one C is reports and updates from city council members serving on outside boards. Dr. Sauer, do we have a report on the beautification of Public Arts Advisory Board?
I do. It'll be a real quick one. So the beautification arts advisory board met last Tuesday. And so what ended up coming out of that is the fact that the RFQ, the request for qualifications for the, the initial or pilot beautification project dropped last Tuesday. And so there have, or it dropped actually Monday. So there is an expectation of it'll be somewhat kind of like what was out at the airport with the original mural project. So this project is going to be located at the corner of Plains Boulevard and Western Street, that northwest corner on the rails to trails, which is going to be an excellent place for there to be a lot of traffic to be able to see that. It's going to be a Gavien type structure, so I don't know if you guys are kind of familiar with exactly what that is. It's a fence-like structure or a cage or cylinder or box that's filled with rocks and concrete. And it's used in landscaping and other applications. So it can be, there's possibility that it could have lighting. There's a possibility of a lot of different things that could go along with it, landscaping, all of these other kinds of opportunities. And I think everybody's very excited about, that's on the committee is very excited about seeing this come to fruition. Because again, we're hoping that the same thing ends up happening that happened with the mural project. And it really let the mural project take off. And we've seen some incredible results out of that over the past year or three years. So there have already, I think from talking to Sherman Bass, there have already been thirty two downloads, twenty three, it's been, RFQ has been downloaded twenty three times already. So there's ought to be a lot of interest that's going on. So I really just like to make for sure that all the, anybody that's out there that might be interested in doing that. I mean, this could be, as far as beautification projects are concerned, and even with this one, landscapers, architects, metalworkers, artists, master gardeners, this is really going to begin to kind of take on a whole new life of its own for beautification in the city of Amarillo. And so I think it's a, it's just that next step of us being able to create an environment that beautifies Amarillo and lets us show off and showcase exactly what we are. So as we begin to attract more businesses and more people moving to Amarillo and we're making an effort at beautifying the city, I think this is a really, it's an outstanding project that will, that will be soon to hit. We'll see it probably start, the, the process ends March the thirty first. Then though, during the month of April will be when the RFQs will be evaluated and an award will be made. And so sometime after May the first, now then you'll have another project going up. And so it's going to be a really exciting new addition to the city.
Great report. You're right. Those murals really did, you know, you guys talked about the mural and next thing you know, there's like twenty murals all across the city and that's still going. I still sometimes turn a corner and I'm like, oh, there's a new mural. So y'all did exactly what you wanted to do with that project, just creating a ripple effect.
Yeah. And actually, speaking of that, you need to go find the snack pack for kids because it's the first one the, of the mural projects and it's already been finished from this year's projects that have already been released. And it's a dinosaur and it's an interactive on the building. And it's probably one of my favorites. And it was actually almost one of the least expensive ones that was actually reimbursed for. But it's a lot of fun. It's going to be one of those where people want to go, stop, get a picture taken. Looks like you're letting a dinosaur drink out of a cup. It's really, it's, so that's another one that's on the snack pack for kids building.
What's the address of that?
You would ask me that.
This is where Stephanie, the superstar, throws it up. Yeah. Somebody will help us.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Eddie?
Eddie, I wanted to
Go ahead.
Do you know what the address is for the snack pack for kids, the dinosaur one? I don't have it right in front of me.
Give me just, and I'll find it.
Okay, thank y'all.
It's up. Is it this one right here?
No, it's not that one.
Okay, let me back out of there. The address for snack pack for kids, if Sherman can confirm, this is twenty four oh six Southwest Third Avenue is what?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Eddie, great report, Eddie. Final thoughts?
You know what? You know what? It's still one of my favorite ones. There's a lot happening. It's very exciting. And people are, it's, it's getting the buzz, and it's changing the landscape of Amarillo. And you know, that's really right now, that's one of the most important things that we can help do.
Elaine, did you have a comment or a question?
I wanted to comment on the mural out at the airport, just that the CBB uses that image on a lot of marketing materials and a lot of the postcards and things. It's such a great visual and represents our city so well. I wanted to also give you a heads up that the Parks and Rec is going to be, you're working through applications for art at Thompson Park and some other places. And I know they're going to be reaching out to your committee for some participation in that. You know, I just think coordination, sometimes I feel like we're, before we had no fishing lines in the pond, and now we're getting a lot, I just want to be sure we're all talking to each other and coordinating. And I don't know how that looks like, but just kind of another plug for that. And then I, I had a question on, you know, our, one of our first years, we talked about wanting to improve our entry gateway at our city limit areas and some of the roadblocks for TaxDOT. You know, was that, is that still being pursued through your committee, Eddie? Is that a different committee?
You know, there was some talk at one, it's not being pursued right now because of kind of the issues that are with TaxDOT. And part of it maybe is maybe we need to be off the ground with a little more clout to be able to maybe help facilitate that one. Originally, when we were talking about the T-PID, that was some of the things that they wanted to use with that T-PID money was to directly address the gateways as we come into town. So, and I know that that committee's being worked on very hard right now since that got passed in the legislature, and I've had a little involvement with that. And I realized that once that gets done and we begin to get the money from that T-PID, I, I feel like that the hoteliers probably, I don't want to speak for them at all, but I think that they're going to, they would very much relish the fact that if we changed the gateways and it's got people seeing what's available, that that would directly affect people staying at their facilities. So I think that's really good. To address your, your question of, or your comment from the Parks and Recreation, I can tell you that almost every meeting that we have with beautification and arts is Michael Keshiva is there, and we have been heavily talking about the fact of putting murals or art. Actually, they're going to make the, on the Lacy River where the Greenway, green area is, is now they're going to, they're directly looking at putting art right there that could be transitioned in and out. And even talking about putting it in the, the building that will be built adjacent to it also at a later date. So yeah, there, there is a, the nice thing about the beautification and arts is it's really going to eventually probably fall underneath the Parks and Recreation. And so there's already a lot of communication. I mean, we've been communicating with them on the master plan and how the beautification and arts master plan actually folds into theirs and underneath theirs. So there's a lot of, actually, I call it synergy that's actually beginning to build. So it's, it's really good.
Great, I'm glad to hear that. And to all of our local young artists, you know, these opportunities to have places to showcase their talent, I think is really one of the messages we have wanted to be getting out and, and a need for them to have opportunities here in Amarillo. And those are some great canvases and platforms to be building for, for our local artists.
Yeah, one of them is, the one part that's really great, I'm sorry I'm going on a little bit, is it's come out of Cap Rock is the Blank Space Murals Group. And the, those groups of, that group of individuals, which is predominantly, it may still be all females, have been, they, they won six of the eight projects for the mural project. And so they're, they're getting a lot of experience on the whole nine yards of the whole art community and the way that works and the way you make it so that you can make money with that and so that you can, it's been really exciting to watch. And I, you know, kudos to Blank Spaces.
Yeah, and the teacher involved with that, it was his idea, and it's his students, it's Sean Kennedy, and he's done a fantastic job taking that program, making it profitable from an entrepreneurial point of view for those kids and changing our city with it.
Yeah, and who would have ever thought that the creation of the beautification and arts project would eventually lead to even something like that coming out of, out of AISD as a, it's, it's just been a, it's just been a really great experience and opportunity for our city.
Well, great work. Please tell the committee how much we appreciate their work. Elaine?
It might be nice to invite Sean and his team of artists to a council meeting sometime for recognition during our, the early part of our meetings, just acknowledge them, recognize their work and their contribution to our city. And maybe our first back in person meeting to actually invite them to come in person, those teenagers, for civic involvement.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We might try to work that around a summer meeting date so that they're, they don't miss school to have to be here, but maybe the June beautification, Eddie report, Eddie or something will be a great time. Hopefully Cat and Francis are taking notes about that as an idea. I think that's a great idea. Okay, anything else on that? All right, let's move to 1D, request future agenda items. Council, do we have anything for the city manager? Okay, not hearing anything. Let's move on to the consent agenda. We've got questions. Yes, Jared?
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention one thing in the coronavirus update. Not, just wanted to remind everyone, we will not be having the press conference tomorrow. We will not be having the press conference tomorrow. Once we went to condition yellow, we had agreed with all of our partners that had been making those press conferences possible, that we would make the announcements necessary on council meeting weeks, and in those off weeks, we would be still having the Wednesday press conference. So we will be having the press conference next Wednesday, but we will not be having the press conference tomorrow. So just wanted to remind everyone of that.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder, and I appreciate the explanation for why we're not doing those weekly. It's great news because the change in status, our numbers are so much better, and don't we look forward to the, to the time when the city doesn't need us to do them at all? So thanks for explaining that. Okay, back to consent agenda, council. Is there, we'll, we'll let the city manager start by answering the questions about items I and J. With regard to Prop 2.
So we've got, well, these are with regard to all the, with regard to the Prop 1 project, line 2J, I've got Floyd Hartman, Assistant City Manager, to walk us through what's going on with the projects. We also have Assistant City Manager Laura Storrs, who's also our chief financial officer that can answer any questions council has on the dollar amounts that were approved through Prop 1. We will also, just for everyone's information, we will also be having a Prop 2 update next week, or next council meeting. So that's coming. Floyd?
Oh, Floyd, you're on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to provide you this additional information. On item I, let's start with it. The original cost estimate on yard and road paving construction cost was 3.4 million. Included in this bid is a bid item totaling about 3.7 million for paving. There are two other items in the bid that are listed in the last two sentences of the agenda item, and that is a water main extension and a storm drain extension coordinated, to coordinate all of those at the same time, which is a goal and objective of the CIP program is to coordinate. The water main cost is going to be funded out of your Water and Sewer Fund ENI project, and that is about 428,000. Then you have a 900, just under $1 million storm drain funded out of the stormwater funding account. So that gets you to the total. Those are round numbers, and if you need more detail, we can get it. But that gets you to the 5,85,000 project that is listed there. Only the 3.7 million is funded through the proposition voter approved bonds. That is about 300,000 more than the original 2016 estimate. That is attributable to a cost increase since those estimates were developed in 2016. Those, and when I get into the other project, go ahead.
I just want to make sure you're going to pause after I, Floyd, so the council can ask any questions they have. I'm sure you were, I thought you were finished, sorry.
Those funding come available from some other bond projects that were listed. Two specifically was helium road paving, which now is a TaxDOT project, so we don't have to do helium under the bond because TaxDOT is doing helium road as a loop. And then there was a project also of TaxDOT right of way funding that was in that list. So that additional funding comes from those projects that no longer need to be done. So yes, I'll pause there, you have questions on I?
So the simple answer Floyd is that number represents more than the, we weren't comparing apples to apples in the question that was asked by the citizen.
Right. Yes.
Okay.
And we could have been more clear in the agenda item, identifying that, so we will, we will do that next time.
Great, good, we appreciate that. Okay, yes, Elaine, question?
So Floyd, I, I just now got to that, that page. So if you wouldn't mind to just state those questions real quickly, so you have three projects, project 462007, and that is which project and what's the dollar amount on that?
Well, I don't have the project memorized, but the paving is 3.7 million. The water is 428,000, and the storm drain is 943. So I look at the agenda.
What was that last one, Floyd?
The, yeah, the 5,600 is the storm drain. The 5,200, or the, the one that starts with 5, 6, project is storm. The one that starts with 5, 2 is water, and the one that starts with 4, 6 is street. So back up, it's 3.7 million per street, a little over 400,000 for water, and a little under a million for storm drain.
Great, thank you. In case we need to answer those questions later or follow up.
And if I need to get the exact breakdown from the bid, I can provide that later. Those are round numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Floyd, onto item J, if you don't mind.
Okay, so item J is actually a very positive thing. We are able to take some of those funds from the, those two projects I listed and expand our bid project into arterials, not just the residential roads. The original cost estimate in 2016 for the quadrant was about 3.1 million, just under 3.1 million. The bids are actually at 3.4 million. Again, those are reflected in, in increased line item costs over that time. We were able to add a number of arterials and some additional residential streets or collector streets, if you will, over what was originally budgeted because of those other funds. So all of those additional funds in this one, about 2.2 million, do, are bond funded, voter approved bond funded, but they are addition to that quadrant, but they go to the arterials. There was also an arterial identified construction project there. And if you'll remember, we have always identified that in 2016, we didn't have the paving assessment, but we committed to the best practices moving forward. So instead of complete rebuilds, these cape seals, micro surfacing, or scrub seal applications are being applied on those arterials to prevent us having to do arterial reconstructions at this point based off of the paving assessment that was done after the 2016 bond. So this is efficiency in application, putting the money where it is. And Laura can go into why those funds can be moved from one job to the other on a qualifying, if you have questions about that. Are there any other questions?
So can I make a statement real quick, especially after these things? So here's what I would want to say is whenever we, I, I, let's talk about the efficiencies and the things that have happened is when we talk about what it was going to cost the taxpayers tax wise, was bonds one, proposition one, and proposition two, the bonds from that were initially going to raise the tax rate by 5.6 cents, if I remember correctly. And because of efficiencies like this, and moving projects up, taking advantage of much better interest rates, is actually we are saving the taxpayers a full penny by the time all the projects have been completed. That's a, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
I believe that it was, that actually, and actually, we've already, already realized almost all of that one, that penny savings, which that's a pretty big deal when you start talking about that our tax rate is 39 cents. And it would be higher than that, it would be at 40 cents if it wasn't for the ability for our team to be able to put these efficiencies together and to make us that much, that much better and make things more efficient for our community.
That's an excellent point, Eddie, and I, I really appreciate the, the citizens' time calling in and asking questions and appreciate their, you know, watching and, and being interested in how those taxpayer dollars are being spent on an important project like streets and roads. It does bring up just how the projects are complicated and happen over a long timeframe. So you, you sometimes will catch a snippet of information, and if you're not using the whole timeframe of the project, you can actually misrepresent or, you know, just out of wanting to have good information, it, you have to hold it over a long period of time for it to be the most accurate. So I'm really glad that you're pointing that out, Eddie, because as our bond council pointed out to us a month or so ago, when we sold the rest of those Prop 2 bonds, we saved citizens' money from what we had estimated those projects were going to cost in 2016.
Millions of dollars.
Yeah, millions of dollars. So again, I really appreciate the citizen being engaged and asking this question, really appreciate staff being on the ball and having an answer for us. And, you know, once again, it's just so vital to our community that we continue to be strong at fiscal management and, and we, that keeps our tax rates low year after year. Any other responses or questions to those two items on the consent agenda? Okay, is there another item on the consent agenda you want to discuss before we have a motion? Okay.
No, I just want to, I just want to clarify that we have not consented to the consent agenda yet, until we take this vote now, that it's a, a scheduling, a preparation, preparing an agenda, but those items can be moved. Any item that's on the consent agenda, we have at times pulled those off for a full individual vote and discussion, so they're not locked in stone on their placeholder on the consent. And so this is the action that we'll take now as a council to consent to those items, and then we will consider individually all of the other items. But they're all basically the same, it's just whether we're doing it as one big group and making those determinations today, not prior to a council meeting.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. And I'll ask the city manager, just give us your 30 second version, Jared, of how you decide whether or not an item goes on the consent agenda.
I think that's a great question. So consent agenda items are typically things that are routine in nature, things that you see on a regular basis, like a routine purchase, an annual purchase of fertilizer, not to exceed $280,000 or, you know, something of that nature, things that you see on a regular basis that are very operational and routine. We also put things on there that you have seen before or that we've done exhaustive presentations on during discussion sessions on previous meetings, or we put second reading items that were unanimous on first reading on consent. We also make sure that, we work to make sure, sometimes we get it wrong, but we work to, as much as possible, make sure that things on consent are things that you are all very familiar with and that citizens have had adequate opportunity to see in previous council meetings before we have it on consent. We try not to put things that are extremely large like these two unless they're things that you've seen frequently. that you've seen frequently. In this case, Prop two and Prop one projects, we've been discussing them very frequently and that's the reason why these were on consent. The size of them certainly would have justified putting them on non-consent. However, the routine, the, the fact that we've seen these so many times made it fall into that routine category and that's why we had it on consent, but we certainly could, this justified, we could have gone to non-consent. So this is one of the gray area items where you can put it one way, one place or the other. One of the reasons why we have so many staff members at all of our council meetings, if they have something on the agenda, even if it's on consent, you never know when something's going to get pulled, when a council member might have a question. A lot of people ask, why do I have so many staff members at the meetings? Well, I want to make sure that we've got the subject matter expert and you saw how well Floyd did answering all of these very detailed questions, looking back into his Wayback Machine to, to have all the facts from 2016 at ready recall so that he can explain, here's how this worked. And we also have Laura who was on call as well, on deck as well, to be able to answer, to go into deeper detail on the finance side of things. That's why we have all those people there, just for a situation like this, to make sure that we've got the right person to give you all exactly accurate information before you're asked to make a vote. So I hope that gives you a really good look into what I'm thinking and, and what the mayor's thinking as we build the budget, or build the agenda together and, and pick which items go on consent and which items go on non-consent.
Yeah, great, great explanation. And of course, every council member knows that they can, when we get to the meeting, any one of them can pull an item off of consent and move it to the non-consent agenda for further discussion or have that as an individual item on its own. So great, great questions. We do this, you know, multiple times and we forget that if it happens to be somebody's first meeting or they're not familiar with how that happens. So I really appreciate Elaine hitting pause on that and throwing that question to Jared's because that's a great, just a good foundational question to touch base on every once in a while. Okay, with that, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the items on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes with the 5-0 vote. We are on item three A under the non-consent items, which is consideration of ordinance number 7914. Mr. City Manager?
Hi Mayor, we've had this in front of council for a couple of times recently. We have, but this is the first reading of this item. So we have Victoria Medley to give a very brief presentation and then answer any questions council might have. Victoria is our Director of Animal Management and Welfare. Victoria?
Hey guys, I'm back. So we've gone over this a few times, had some, and I know that you guys had the opportunity to look at our PowerPoints. This ordinance was approved or went through our animal advisory board and they voted on three to zero to send it to council to get it approved. As I said, we've done over this a few times. Is there any questions that anybody has about it?
Other than any updates from community engagement, I am, I am not hearing any opposition to it. I am not necessarily hearing support for it, it's just kind of been quiet. So if you have any other insight on, on what's the feedback beyond the advisory board, just the general community, what, what you heard?
We've had very little, you know, people reaching out to us regarding this ordinance. We had a few questions that we were able to respond to regarding like how it would affect our rescues or our fosters and we explained to them that it wouldn't. So we've had very little response from the community regarding one way or the other.
A great question.
Mayor, I think we've had one person express a concern that it doesn't go far enough. They want it to be much, much more aggressive. And I, I think everybody here wants to do the very best job serving our animals and our communities as we can. But I think we also have to recognize that, and, and I'm sure the animal management board, you know, a lot of their thought process, and Victoria, you might be able to, to expand, was, you know, we have to, we can't go straight from very few ordinances that really help us manage our animal population and provide the healthiest outcomes from animal shelter to having very aggressive ordinances. So we have to have a measured approach to incrementally take those steps and whatever steps our board feels are appropriate, or whatever that steps they feel are appropriate to recommend to council. We can obviously tailor that recommendation at the council level, but obviously, you know, respecting those recommendations is something council frequently does from our boards and commissions and advisory committees. Victoria, is there anything to add on that?
No, I agree, and I think that we want to be real. I, I think the board understands and just kind of how we're looking at developing the department is doing it really sequential and incremental, best address, not just the, you know, the care and the welfare of the animals, but also the safety and the health of our community.
Any other questions for Victoria? Hey, do we have a motion then on item three A?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve ordinance number 7914, amending chapter eight dash two to include requiring a permit for the breeding of an adult dog or cat, to add definitions for adult dog or cat and breeder, and to provide for severability repealer and continuation of prior law and penalty.
Okay.
Been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmembers. Do we have further discussion or questions about this item? I've got one question, Victoria or Jared. How are we going to communicate this to the general public? I mean, we started that process already through public engagement and, but now that it's becoming, if, if this were to pass and become an ordinance, how are we going to communicate that to folks who have a pet and want to know how, what, what's required of them or what does this ordinance change for them?
Mayor, we're going to, obviously, once it gets passed or when it gets passed, we'll put it on our website and it, and the proposed one is out there right now. The other thing that we're really doing is our field officers are the ones that have a lot of one-on-one experience with people out in the field. So we are really trying to keep track of if we have somebody that might have some of these issues, that once this is passed, we're able to go and talk to them and educate them regarding the ordinance, not necessarily citing them or anything like that, but really trying to educate them first. So I do know that our field supervisor has really been trying to keep track of those issues that we're having in certain parts of towns with, with possible breeding, that we really will want to focus on them to educate them first.
And Mayor, I would also add, what Victoria described is very similar to what we do through environmental health, through building safety. We educate, we warn, and, and so there's a couple of big, very detailed steps before we cite. I have my hand real close to the camera, it makes it look kind of weird. So there's a lot of steps where we try and educate before we actually issue a citation. Now, in this situation, if we come up on a pretty egregious situation, and we've seen some with regard to backyard breeding and other things that are just unhealthy for the animals, unhealthy for our community and definitely unhealthy for our shelter, we, we could theoretically in those situations, jump straight to a citation. But that will be a, a, a decision to do the right thing. You don't, you know, at that point, you know, the, the horse is way out of the barn at that point, so we, we need to address those in a meaningful way. But I, I don't think that's going to be the rule. I think that's going to be the exception and we need to be prepared to act in, in an exception like that. Generally speaking though, for most, for the, for the most part, we're going to do exactly what Victoria said, educate, warn before any site, educate and warn before any citations.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, all of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I see five, that passes with the 5-0 vote. Victoria, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, item three B is to consider the approval of a tax abatement agreement between the City of Amarillo and the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Casique for a project that would be placed on Loop 335, South Georgia, oh, well, I'm sorry, and, and another partner in that, which is Loop 335, South Georgia Street Ventures LLC. Mr. City Manager?
Well, we've got Kevin Carter, President and CEO of AEDC here to walk us through the item. We also have a number of guests, you've probably seen some names that you might not recognize. So we're real excited to have all of the representatives from Casique with us. So Kevin, take it away and please introduce all of our guests.
Absolutely, thank you Jared, Mayor, Council. Let me introduce our guest first and then, then we'll jump right in and then if y'all have questions. But I'm very thrilled to be able to introduce Gil DeCardenas. He is the CEO of Casique. And then also on the call is Justin Kober. He is Senior Vice President of Operations. And then Kelly Rinzeparis, who is a partner with Site Selection Group, who brought the project to us. And so very glad to have you guys on the call, Gil and your team.
Thanks for having us. Excuse me.
I'll jump right in on this first item, is to consider approval for tax abatement agreement between the City of Amarillo and Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Casique LLC and Loop 335, South Georgia Street Ventures LLC. And so we're going to share our screen and I've got a presentation for this. They've been around since 1973. They are the leading producer of Latin cheeses in the U.S. They also produce other products such as chorizos, cremas and salsas. And they are looking for a location to expand their operations due to significant growth within the company. If they choose Amarillo with this project, the project will be approximately 200,000 square foot facility on 55 acres of land in the Amarillo EDC-owned South Georgia Business Park. It will go at the southern end of the property. $88 million in new capital expenditure, 52 million of that in building improvements and 36 million in, in equipment. This first phase would be 200 new full-time jobs with the possibility of adding 300 additional. The proposal for you today is a 10-year, 100% tax abatement on the real and business personal property. And I want to visit with you about some of the economic benefit of this project. The overall economic impact of the project for the, for 20 years is $527 million over, over 20 years. And that's just based on the first 200 jobs. That does not include the additional 300 that may come in later phases. So quite a huge economic impact to our economy, roughly, you know, $27 million a year over 20 years. You can look at some of the things that are going to happen. 200 direct jobs. This one has a, a large, because it's manufacturing, has a large spinoff number, so it's almost two to one. So 200 direct jobs and 190 spinoff jobs, so almost two for one. The, the salaries that are direct are 40, are a little over the median wage, 45,778. And look at the amount on the spinoff jobs. Those are $45,000 spinoff jobs, which you don't see all the time. With the last project that we presented, those spinoff jobs were quite a bit less than the direct jobs. So those, the direct and spinoff jobs are almost equal in pay. And so what a huge economic impact that this project has. Excellent. Excellent. You can kind of see some of the benefits. You know, you'll have new residential property tax, you'll have new FFNE property tax, real property tax or arson costs, but most of those costs are in the utility cost and you can see in the line above, you're going to get utility revenue. So you see revenue and then you see the cost to offset, that's the, the cost of government services that you recoup in, in billing. So, and then the cost of government service, that's police, fire, those things that you provide to your residents. So overall, a huge benefit, the benefit to the city after the 10-year abatement is $5.5 million in property tax for the next 10 years. So 20, over the 20-year life, the city's benefit is 5.6 million. That's to the City of Amarillo, not to the community as a whole, where the, where the 400, or the 527 million comes into effect. Mayor, any questions, Mayor?
Yeah, Council, do you have questions for the EDC team? And if we need to put those numbers, I thought those slides were very helpful, by the way. You, y'all are just getting better and better at putting those together that help us understand the project and mainly help citizens who aren't familiar on a day in, a day out basis with how the economic development dollars work. So I really appreciate those slides.
So based on that, real quick, Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment that we have spent the last four years developing some very, and especially when Kevin Carter came on, we began to develop some very significantly measurable criteria for whenever we began to look at each one of these projects. So these projects are not willy-nilly, they, for tax abatements to occur at certain levels, they have to have a certain number of people, a certain, they, they, we need to be having, the, the jobs need to be paying at a certain level. So we've got all of these criteria that these check marks have to, have to mark off so that we know that the investment is going to be significant into Amarillo, so that our investment, there's definitely a significant return on our investment. And so Kevin, thank you. You've done a great job. You continue to do a great job and this has been an incredible two years with you at the helm.
Yeah, we're looking at that EDC team, all three of you guys.
Yes.
I can't tell if that's Doug or Michael, is it, is it Michael?
It's Doug.
Okay, so Doug's not new. We always appreciate Doug. He does great work and he's been doing that for years. But I was going to comment that all three of you were new in the last two years, just to Councilmember Sauer's point, we have had some changes in personnel and leadership at the EDC and I really appreciate the, the work y'all have done. There are other hooks in the water and we're still working, but this company, the family involved with this company, the employees that we've met, they are a fit for our Amarillo culture and they are a fit for our economy. Part of what derives the decision here is the milk shed that they need to make their products. And we have that here because of investments that we've made over the last 20 years in the dairy industry. So Eddie, I think your point from that Eddie was, we've really seen the fruit of the personnel at the EDC putting their fish hook in the line and working hard for projects that will benefit our economy. And this is a project that is a great match with our community.
Yeah, and so because of that, I just want to tell Gil, we are so excited for you guys to come to Amarillo. We think you guys are a perfect fit for us and we're a perfect fit for you.
Council, any other questions? Then I, I'm going to throw the microphone to Gil, just give him a chance to say anything that he wants to say on behalf of the company, but let's, let's definitely cover any of your questions.
So.
Go ahead Elaine. Go ahead Elaine.
I also wanted to be following up and be sure to have an opportunity to say welcome, we're very excited to have you guys coming to be a part of our community. And I had a question for Kelly. I know when you were introduced as like a site selector and so if you can kind of explain what your role in this, this project is, has been.
Sure, absolutely. So Site Selection Group, we have companies such as Casique that will come to us to ask for assistance in terms of determining where to locate their next facility. And so we work with location analytics, so determining where is the best available labor, most affordable labor, most qualified labor, transportation and logistics and all of the various different analytics to go into that component of it. And then, you know, real estate availability, et cetera. And then in addition to that, we help them with the brokerage side of things and as well as the economic incentive side. And so we, we have started with a nationwide search and we've now narrowed it down, obviously. And the, the favored community within Texas is absolutely Amarillo. And the support definitely from the AEDC as well as the mayor and the rest of the city administration has been hugely helpful in helping us gather information in the company and, you know, narrowing down the scope of the particular sites.
Great question.
I'm not sure I want to ask this publicly. I'm not sure I want to ask this publicly, so I'm asking this like on a private email, maybe, but just the things that were, what you see as the strengths of Amarillo and the weaknesses of Amarillo, for us to continue positioning ourselves to attract new businesses, to know where we need to, you know, tighten our belt, and where we, as a community, can continue being an alternative that companies are looking for.
Yeah, and I, I'd love to have a more in-depth conversation offline with that, for sure. But I think that the first thing is, is being business-friendly, and the, the city definitely understands that. As we mentioned, there's, there's certain things that will drive a, a project, and, you know, Milkshed is one of them. There are other areas in Texas that have that Milkshed, so there were other factors that, that made Amarillo come out on top. But definitely understanding business and being business-friendly, business-friendly as well as understanding the cost gaps that might exist between different sites, whether that's from a tax perspective or a real estate perspective, but addressing those issues and narrowing that gap so that it's a long-term success. But I'm absolutely happy to even have that dialogue after this.
Thanks, Kelly. I appreciate that.
Sure. Eddie, Frida, Howard, any other questions? Okay, Gil, anything you want to say on behalf of the company?
Actually, I want to say something on, on the behalf of Amarillo, if you don't mind.
Sure.
That is, I, I want you all to understand that from our perspective, we started this search with 123 sites, I believe it was, that Kelly and her team found. So it's 123 competitors, or 122, excuse me, to Amarillo. And here we are at the very end, literally, with, with just a couple to look at, and, and you're at the top. And I think that speaks very highly to your community, what you've been able to produce, the support we've gotten from Kevin and the Economic Development Group. We're, we're thrilled, and we, we finish this process up, we want you to understand how thankful we are of everything you've done for us. We're a family-owned business. We understand, we look at things a little differently from time to time, and certainly communities to us are, are very important. It's not just a dollar sign, and you've got a tremendous community. From a business standpoint, our parents started this business 48 years ago with $1,500 in their, well, actually in their pockets. That was what they could borrow from other friends and what they had saved. The first delivery vehicle we had was the family car, when it was not taking us to school. And the first facility we had was rented during daylight hours only, because it's all my parents could afford. And when I say my parents, it's actually, I have three other brothers and sisters who are my partners in the business. So we are a family business all the way through. Most of the team we have have been with us, or a significant part, for more than 10 years, and we're this mix of, of people that have been with us a long time, newer people, Justin was on the call, joined us just over two years ago, and it's this great blend, great culture of what got us here and what's going to get us to the next phase. So we're a little different as a company. At, at the end of the day, we really appreciate the community we're in. It's important to us. Our people are very important to us. I think we're a little different that way, and we kind of get the same vibe from Amarillo. So I really am thankful for everything you've done for us, and we're looking to finalize this project here pretty soon.
Wonderful. Well, I have thoroughly enjoyed the time that I've spent with you guys as a team on your visits to Amarillo and Zoom meetings as we've worked this project. I could tell from the first time I met this team that you would be a fabulous fit for the community of Amarillo. So thank you for the kind words, but let me tell you how excited we are to have the opportunity to be the place where your business grows to the next level. That's absolutely how we want to partner with you, and we look forward to doing it as we work to finalize and finish, finish that exact result. So thanks, Gil. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, Justin, for all of the, the hours that y'all put into getting to this point. Counsel, any other questions before we consider a motion on this?
Mayor, I just want, I just want to say hello to Gil and welcome him to Amarillo, and I'm so looking forward to meeting you as, as well in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Howard?
I'd like to compliment Gil for picking us out of 123 sites. That's amazing. I used to be part of a family business myself, so I think it's wonderful that it's a family business that's been chosen, and also for places that are not family businesses, but especially, I appreciate you choosing Amarillo.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, do we have a motion to approve this item 3B?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the tax abatement agreement between the City of Amarillo and Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Cacique LLC and Loop 335 South Georgia Street Ventures LLC. That's it.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith, to approve this tax abatement agreement. Any further questions or discussion? I would throw a question just to the AEDC team about the procedure and the timeline here. We're in, if we approve this agreement and, and the location incentive agreement that's following on item 3C, Kevin, can you just tell us timeline-wise, what are the next steps in making this project a reality?
Yes, ma'am, I can tell you. So the city obviously does the tax abatement agreement first, and then we have three other entities that hopefully will opt into that agreement. One of those will present tonight to Amarillo College at their Board of Regents meeting tonight, and then in three weeks, we will present on April 13th, we will present at Randall County to this. We've visited with the, the commissioners, they're very excited about this project in Randall County, and so that would be the next step. And then after that, we're going to visit with High Plains Underground Water District about signing on to this agreement. And then also, Cacique has submitted an application for the Texas Enterprise Fund. That is the state's deal closing fund, and so those funds are very important. We hope to hear something about that in, in mid to late April, and then Cacique will make a decision at that time, what location they will choose. Is that right, Kelly or Gil?
That's correct. And then, and then make a decision and move forward quickly. They're excited to make that decision and get started.
I think it's a great sign that the governor, you know, recently called us out for having historic accomplishments with regard to economic development, and we, of course, were working on this deal at the time and knew we would be asking for help from his office. So I thought, that's fantastic, that he's watching from Austin about the economic development success we're having here in the City of Amarillo, and I think it's, it's a good sign for us, it's a good time for us to be asking for assistance from his office for new businesses that are interested in making Amarillo their home.
And we sincerely appreciate your help and support in that, as well as all the, the various representatives as well.
Okay, if that does it for discussion on the motion, then I will call a question. All of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And that passes with a five oh vote. Moving on to item 3C, I'll just hand it to Kevin Carter. Kevin, you want to give us a little preview on this item?
Yes, ma'am. This item is to consider approval for a location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Cacique LLC. This item authorizes the AEDC to execute a location incentive agreement with Cacique LLC and Loop 335 South Georgia Ventures LLC. Already kind of given you a little bit of history, they are the leading producer of Latin cheese. This 10-year agreement would incentivize Cacique with up to $5 million in job creation incentive, based on $10,000 per job for a total of 500 employees, paid out over five years. And, and let me, before I go to the next step, I wanted to, to tie that in with what Councilmember Sauer talked about. This does fit within the incentive guideline and, and the regulations that the council adopted almost two years ago, right before I got, right after I got here, I guess. Those were adopted, and I will tell you, Andrew Freeman put those together at the City Economic Development Office and did a fantastic job. When we send those to prospects, they're impressed with how that's all put together, and so that does fit within the guidelines, both the abatement and this process. And so I kind of wanted to tie that together. Also, the agreement would provide up to $2,500 per employee, up to 300 employees in relocation expense reimbursement. We think this is a huge opportunity because it allows us to grow our workforce and to have employees move in at some of their current locations. So that would be per employee that relocates to the Amarillo MSA. Also included in the agreement is an incentive that would convey a 55-acre tract of land in the South Georgia Business Park. In return for these incentives, and if Cacique selects Amarillo for its location, they will construct a 200,000-square-foot food processing facility with a cost of at least $88 million, $52 million in improvements, $36 million in equipment. The agreement also includes a ground lease on the 55-acre tract of land that allows the company to take advantage of reinvesting money from the sale of the current location. After the 1031 exchange is completed, then the land would convey to the company. So Cacique plans to move employees into the area that helps with the workforce and also additional tax base. Our board voted yesterday 4-0 to approve the location incentive agreement, and we would ask the council to do so as well.
Counsel, do we have any questions for the AEDC team? Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do. I move to approve the location incentive agreement between Amarillo Economic Development Corporation and Cacique LLC to provide Cacique LLC $5 million for the creation of up to 500 full-time employees, and, which is to be paid out over five years and will be based on a 10-year performance term. Also, the Amarillo Economic Development Corporation will convey 55 acres of land and pay $2,500 per employee for relocation expenses for employees that move into the five-county MSA area.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve this location incentive agreement. Any further questions or discussion from the council? Okay, all of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I see five hands, that passes with a five oh vote. Cacique team, thank you for your patience in joining our meeting today. We look forward to you being on the ground in Amarillo soon, we hope.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
AEDC team, good work on this project. It is exactly what we're aiming for, a company that meets our local policies with regard to economic incentives, and yet will also be very comfortable to the culture that we have here as a family-owned business and our conservative values. So it's a great match, and you guys just keep bringing us these wonderful projects, and it's, it's exciting to see the work that you're doing. So, great job.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, counsel.
Yeah. Okay, that brings us to the end of our, our agenda before we go into executive session. So I'd ask the city attorney if he would read our executive session special language.
Yes, ma'am. Close session, the Amaro City Council was announced on March 23rd, 2021, at 2:45 PM under the following authority. Section 551.087, discuss commercial financial information received from the existing business or business prospect, which the city is negotiating for the location or retention of a facility or for incentive, the city is willing to spend our financial information submitted by the state. Thank you.